Tonight, we're focusing in on zoom with Galaxy AI on the new Samsung Galaxy S24 Ultra. Ah, a baby tiger. Check out his claws as he prepares to pounce on that frog. Close one, but not as close as this zoom. We can literally count the whiskers. Oh, look, mom's here. Good thing I'm nowhere nearby. Go wild with Galaxy AI on the new S24 Ultra and zoom in on the epic day or night.
Get yours now at samsung.com.
Today on City Cash Chicago, Cook County State's Attorney's race remains tight. Candidates gathering signatures for our future elected school board. And the Shed Aquarium's rescued otter pup is the cutest thing I saw this week. Joining me to break it all down, WTTW City Hall reporter Heather Sharone and Chalk Beat Chicago's Bureau Chief Becky VV. It's Friday, March 29th. I'm Jacoby Cochran, and this is what Chicago's talking about. Morning Becky, how you feeling today?
I'm feeling great, Jacoby. Thanks for having me here.
No, I'm excited to have you here. Welcome back Heather, how you feeling?
I'm feeling good. Thanks for having me.
We've got some big stories to talk about from the election coming up later this year in November to the results of the election we just had last week. But we gotta start off with a little bit of sad news out of Lincoln Park. Earlier this week, Uncle Julio's, a restaurant that has been there for the last 30 years abruptly closed. And to make matters worse, and I'm saying this very selfishly, Wednesday, when they announced it was my mother's birthday. And Uncle Julio's was one of her favorite restaurants. We went there last year to celebrate her birthday as a family. And I went from calling her in the morning, singing boys to me in on the phone, on FaceTime, as I've done every year for the last, I don't know, 27 years of my life, whether in person or online. So a few hours later, having to tell her her favorite restaurant closed down. And that just crushed this woman. And it made me think, is there a Chicago restaurant for both of you? That if you got a notification that it just abruptly closed, would just absolute crush you? Becky, I want to start with you. What's that restaurant that would just, it would break your heart?
Spinning J. I am there a lot, and it is such a wonderful local Chicago establishment. It's in my neighborhood. I walk to it. Mondays and Tuesdays, they're closed and I'm always like, oh, today I can't get my coffee and my quiche. But it is such a lovely local owned business. And if they closed, I would probably stay in bed all day, cry.
Is that Spinning J Bakery and Soda Fountain?
Yes, yes.
For people who may not be familiar, that's in Humboldt Park. And we will drop a link in the show notes for you to get put on. You said, Joe, the coffee and quiche is that your go to?
Oh, yes. The quiche is amazing. The coffee is wonderful. There's sourdough cinnamon rolls. Ugh, so good.
And Heather, I gotta ask you, which one would it break your heart if you realized one day you could never go back? And you didn't get to say goodbye?
So I gotta represent for my brother here, who is currently living in DC, but is in the Marine Corps and hasn't been able to spend a lot of time in Chicago in the last couple of years. And he loves the bagel in Lakeview. And he will literally travel just an insane amount of distance to get their fried salami open face sandwich. Now, this, this thing, it's not just as big as your face, it's as big as like your shoulders. And this man will go in on this. And at one point, his doctor is going to tell me that I can no longer take him to this restaurant. But it is so good. And if I had to call him and tell him that this restaurant had closed in Chicago, I don't know what I would do. I would just be devastated. But he was in town last year. It was the marathon. We braved street closures. We dragged children. We literally moved mountains to get this man to the bagel so he could have this lunch. But I don't even want to know if it closes because it would be family FaceTimes. The text chains would blow up. I would be held personally responsible for the closure. I just, I couldn't even imagine.
Oh, I have a very similar, when I first thought of this question, so many things popped into my head. Like we just did an episode on Home of the Hoagie. But the one for me is Dan's Hot Dogs off of 93rd and Ashland. It is like it's, it's nothing, like you might pass by it and not even notice it unless you see the Vienna beef umbrellas outside. But I lived down the street and went to the elementary school on, off of 87th and Ashland, from kindergarten to eighth grade. And so Dan's Hot Dogs, Dan's Vanilla Shake, their fries, their burgers. It's just one of those restaurants that they're seasonal. And so when the, the weather gets good, I just randomly pop over, get a very basic meal. And it takes me all the way back to like sixth through eighth grade. And like riding our bike to and from school and stopping there anytime we had some money. So that's one of those places that if it closed, I would, I'd be absolutely devastated. And it would have almost nothing to do with the food and everything to do with the memories.
Mm hmm. That's always it, right?
If you are new to City Cash Chicago, every single week, we like to bring in some of our favorite voices from around the city. And if you are not new to City Cash Chicago, these two voices are ones that you recognize. And the reason we've got Heather and Becky in here today is we gotta start off with the Cook County State's Attorney Race. This has been a big story all week, mostly because we ain't got no idea who's gonna carry the Democratic nomination to this point. Heather, what is the latest coming out of this very, very close race?
So we're talking Thursday mid morning and we are still waiting for the Chicago Board of Elections and the Cook County Clerk to continue counting both mail in ballots and provisional ballots. So right now, the gap between retired appellate court justice Eileen O'Neil Burke and lecturer Clayton Harris III is 1,600 votes, just about. And in a race where more than a half of a million votes were cast, that shows you just how on the razor's edge we are.
Now, 1,600 is like, it's, it's still a lot. Like if we was talking, you know, somebody just gave me $1,600, right? If you say, I got to perform in front of 1,600 people, right? Obviously, numbers are relative, but when you are talking about an elected official that goes across Cook County, an office that has been, you know, punched on the last few years very intensely, 1,600 says a lot about just how split Cook County is.
Yeah, that's 100% true. And so the way that state law works, that basically April 2nd, so Tuesday is the last day for mail in votes to arrive if they were then, if they have been postmarked on Election Day. And that if verified, they'll be counted. So we are unlikely to see either candidate concede or declare victory until that day. Now, does that mean the election's over? Maybe, maybe not. Because we are close enough that this could allow the losing candidate to request a recount. And then we're sort of, so, and then we're really in sort of a little bit of uncharted territory. Now, this is, you know, sort of a very, very close race, but it is certainly the closest race since the pandemic really changed the way we all voting. And I think that's really having sort of a profound impact on sort of the narrative of this race.
Yeah, Becky, this is something you pointed out to me earlier as well. You know, as much as we have focused on the political differences between the two candidates, what does Cook County want at large? This is also really highlighting what maybe new normals look like for our elections moving forward.
Right. And it's interesting to me that it takes, it's taking this amount of time to count all of those vote by mail ballots. Because I think vote by mail has become so increasingly used by, by voters. And I think when I looked at the numbers that the Board of Elections sends every night, and Heather can correct me if I'm wrong, but there was something like 100,000 mail in ballots that went out, 50,000 of which are still outstanding. Now, not everybody mailed them back. I know friends who get their ballot in the mail and then forget to send it back. But it is fascinating, and it does remind me of the 2020 presidential election when we waited, you know, what, a week to determine who, who had won that race. And I think the interesting thing is that's also fascinating to watch is in the time that people have to wait to find out, there's all kinds of misinformation and accusations around fraud and conspiracy and mail or election. What's the word I'm looking for?
Shenanigans, hijinks, tomfoolery.
Yes, there's accusations that people are doing something nefarious at the Board of Elections, which I worry is, you know, creating a reason for people to, you know, distrust this system rather than accept it as a sort of new normal. And that it's just how some people and new, younger generations have kind of chosen to, to cast their ballots.
So I think a couple of things have happened. One, you know, it's impossible to overstate just how drastically the pandemic changed the way people engage in elections. And mostly because that now Illinois is a state where you can sign up, as I have, to be a permanent voter by mail. So every election comes, I live in suburban Cook County, the Elections Authority, I don't have to do anything. The Elections Authority sends me a ballot. I, I take care of it in my own time and I send it back. So what that means is that there's just a larger uncertainty about what the voter turnout is going to be. So it used to be on Election Day, you were going to get a majority of the votes cast in person on that day. And Elections Authorities had gotten very good, particularly in Chicago, at counting the votes cast on Election Day by a reasonable hour that night. Specifically by sort of the start of the 10 o'clock news. But that just simply isn't possible anymore because people like voting by mail, but they don't necessarily like voting very early by mail. Which means that once a ballot comes in, Elections Officials have to go through all of the verification steps. So you've got to check to make sure that the ballot is dated. You have to make sure that the ballot is signed. You have to make sure that the signature is, is correct. And you have to make sure it was postmarked before the end of Election Day. Those are all steps that take time. And when you have nearly half of the ballots coming in, sort of in the days right before or right after Election Day, that's going to create sort of a logjam. But I think the example of what happened in the mayor's election back a year ago now is instinctive. So the, the election was sort of clear by 10 o'clock at night. Paul Vallas conceded, Brandon Johnson declared victory. However, because I'm paid to keep paying attention to this, I noticed that Brandon Johnson gained nearly three percentage points on Paul Vallas after Election Night. Now, that didn't change anything, right? It didn't matter because it didn't change the outcome. But when you have an election that's this close, like between Harris and O'Neil Burke, it does matter. The, the other thing I think is that this election has really been shaped by this narrative that it was a low turnout election. But the fact of the matter is, is that Chicagoans vote in larger numbers than nearly any other city in America. And I for one love that for us. And the, so on Election Day, we heard sort of people saying that the turnout was shockingly low. And that really shaped this turnout, that not a lot of people came out to vote. But when all is said and done, turnout is going to be more than 25%, which means that it will be greater than the last time there was an uncontested Democratic contest for president in an election year. And that, of course, was 2012, when Barack Obama won. It's not really anything different than we saw, you know, nearly a decade ago. And it's not, I think, anything different we're gonna see in the future. But I think that has sort of a really sort of potentially damaging sort of notion. Because if it feels like nobody's voting and nobody cares, then I think it just sort of makes it seem like everything's more heightened because everybody is fighting over what seems like a limited number of sort of votes. And I just don't think that's accurate.
Easter's in full bloom at Whole Foods Market with great deals on spiral cut bone and ham and leg of lamb, both crowd pleasers. Round out your spread with quiche deviled eggs and delicious catering platters from Prepared Foods. Oh, and remember to pick up a Whole Foods Market bunny cake from the bakery. Strap for time, they cater too, with delicious options available without the effort. Find hundreds of Easter deals and delights now at Whole Foods Market.
Jon Stewart is back in the host chair at The Daily Show, which means he's also back in our ears on The Daily Show Ears Edition Podcast. The Daily Show Podcast has everything you need to stay on top of today's news and pop culture. You get hilarious satirical takes on entertainment, politics, sports, and more from Jon and the team of correspondents and contributors. The podcast also has content you can't get anywhere else, like extended interviews and a roundup of the weekly headlines. Listen to The Daily Show Ears Edition wherever you get your podcasts.
While so many Chicagoans are taking a breath after just going to the polls last week, the three of us are already looking forward to November's election. And Becky, one thing that is dominating your plate, I imagine, is the forthcoming elected school board for the city of Chicago. That election season is here and you all are doing some amazing coverage. Where are we at now?
Yeah, it's been a long time coming, as many people would say. You know, this bill initially passed in 2021, and then there was lots of back and forth. And as Heather would say, shenanigans in the state legislature trying to iron out exactly how these seats will be elected and where people who get onto the school board, what the communities they represent are gonna look like. So we have that district map now, and as of Tuesday of this week, candidates in, interested in running can start collecting signatures. They need 1,000 signatures to get on the ballot. So we've got, you know, about six or so that have come and filed paperwork with the Board of Elections to start reporting their campaign finances. And people who say, you know, yeah, I want to run for this, this new elected school board. It's the first time Chicago will be electing school board members. There will be a 21 member school board starting in January of 2025. And yeah, voters will get to see on their ballot in November, a person who wants to represent them for school board.
Now that you are starting to see names come in, right? We've got a little bit more clarity, but also position next to Brandon Johnson's agenda moving pretty quickly through the school board. We talked about this earlier this week. He was able to get rid of most of it, put his own in. They've already set sort of their, like made it clear what their agenda is in terms of reinvesting in neighborhood schools. They've ended their contract with the Chicago Police. Like, I mean, the school board is getting work done in this early year of Brandon Johnson's administration. As we move towards an elected school board, you know, how do you see that? I don't know if it's tension or agenda sort of playing out as, you know, eventually he won't have full control.
Right. So he will get to appoint 11 people of the 21 that will take their seats in January. So there will be 10 elected and then 11 appointed, 10 of whom have to come from those districts as well. So he will still, in that way, have the majority to continue with his agenda. And to add to your list there, he, he did, last week, the school board announced that they were gonna end student based budgeting, which is a system that budgets schools based on how many students they enroll. And so we are anticipating this next fiscal year budget for the school year to look a little different. We're waiting for the details, but they have signaled that they're moving away from that formula. So I do think that for the next two years, while we're in this hybrid board period, he will still, I think, try to continue to move the ball on his policy agenda. There will be some louder voices, certainly, speaking up against him or against some of those moves. And I do think the 2026 elections, when all 21 are, are elected, those will be very fascinating because you'll actually have records of people who have sat on the board to, to kind of point to and, and talk about. It's gonna be a really fascinating two and arguably four years to see this governance shift in our school system. Because for so long, we've operated under mayoral control, where, you know, kind of what the mayor wants plays out. And it's been very top down. And part of why we have this, these elections coming is because parents and activists for many years said, we want more of a say. And now we're gonna get it. So it will be fascinating. And, and, you know, school boards across the nation have been hotbeds of very interesting political activity and often are bellweathers for where our national politics go. So stay tuned, everyone, and, and tune in really, like tune in and, and get up to speed on this.
I am sitting here with WTTW's Heather Sharone and Chalk Beat Chicago's Becky VV. Earlier this week, Heather, you released an article that talked about the relationship or tense relationship between the chief of the Chicago Police Department and the Civilian Office of Police Accountability. What's going on between them?
So what happened was, is that usually meetings of the Chicago Police Board are relatively sleepy affairs, right? Like, you know, maybe there's a hearing, maybe there's a vote. This is not sort of the kind of meeting that like gets top billing or is really sort of always on my radar. But I was really struck by what happened at the February 22nd Police Board meeting, when top cop Larry Snelling really just unleashed on Andrea Kirsten without naming her by name. She is the head of the Civilian Office of Police Accountability, the agency charged with investigating misconduct by officers. And what triggered this was a veritable flood of recommendations from COPA to Snelling to fire more than a two dozen officers because they had engaged in significant misconduct. Now, that's a lot. That is more in the first two months of 2024 than COPA recommended in all of 2023 be fired. And Snelling was obviously angry about it. And he said that the way that COPA has been handling those probes not only compromises public safety because it makes officers less willing to engage in what he called proactive policing, but that it also compromises the mental health of officers and makes it more likely that they could suffer from suicidal thoughts or die by suicide, which is really a startling sort of condemnation by the city's top cop towards the agency charged with barreting out misconduct and making sure that police officers engage in constitutional policing. So I dug into sort of what prompted this issue.
Can we back up for one second? I just want to make sure I'm not being crass here. But did he, they said, hey, these officers, we've investigated them, we recommend they be fired. And he said, well, if we fire people for these reasons, more officers down the road might not do their job well and might, officers might have suicidal thoughts and kill themselves. I'm not, and again, I'm not saying that that's not an issue, but that seems like a real jump to say, I don't know if this is the right measure of accountability.
Yeah. So he said that COPA had treated officers very unfairly and that they had engaged in investigations that allowed bias and speculation to drive these recommendations for what they call separation. And that, that sort of unfairness, not, as I said, not only compromises public safety, but sort of hurts officers' mental health and, and wellness. And he drew a direct correlation between them. I don't need to tell you that Andrea Kirsten said, well, that is not based in facts and evidence and that we don't engage in bias and speculation. So what's interesting about it is that this really echoes condemnation of COPA that I have heard time and time again from leaders of the city's largest police union. They have long, long thought that COPA was biased against them. And I, I think what makes this story really important is that it is incredibly difficult to hold officers accountable for even the most egregious misconduct. The thing that I've been thinking about a lot is that last week, the city council agreed to pay $45 million to the family of a 15 year old boy who was left unable to walk or talk or feed himself after being involved in a car crash that was the direct result of an unauthorized police pursuit. Now, that officer who started that pursuit in violation of departmental policy did not get authorization from his superiors to either engage in that pursuit or continue that pursuit, is still an active duty member of the Chicago Police Department. And as best I can tell, has faced no discipline for engaging in that conduct, which really sort of, you know, changed the course of this boy's life and I'm sure the course of his family's life. And this, this chase happened in 2021. It is the year of our Lord 2024. So I think that, you know, I think that if, if Chief Snelling thinks that police officers are being treated unfairly, you know, I, I think that that is, you know, I'm happy to sort of report that out. But I think that you have to sort of balance that against the evidence that we have that it's really hard to sort of discipline police officers. And because of sort of the ongoing court fight over how that disciplinary process should play out, either in private, through arbitration, or in front of the police board, I'm not sure that there's actually a mechanism right now in place that would allow the city to fire any officer because of the police union's fight against sort of the way it's been done in the past.
Find a fresh take on a fall getaway to Wilmington, North Carolina and beaches. Enjoy hiking trails in a state park, fresh seafood with a side of live music and fall festivals galore. Then live it up along the Riverwalk in Wilmington's historic downtown. With three island beaches, Carolina, Cury and Wrightsville, and a vibrant downtown, you get the best of the Carolina coast all in one place. Plan your fall getaway at WilmingtonAndBeachesVacation.com.
First, the bad news. SAP Business AI won't help you generate cubist versions of your family's holiday photos, but it will help you understand which supplier is best to help you roll out your plant based packaging in Southeast Asia or identify the training your junior project manager needs to rise up the ranks and automate repetitive tasks while you focus on big innovations. So you can be ready for the next opportunity. Revolutionary technology, real world results. That's SAP Business AI.
We love having the tough conversations, looking at the latest headlines in the city. But we also want to give you some positivity, right? We want to give you some events to do, things that are driving us through our weekends. And Becky, I want to start with you. What is your good news?
Well, it is a long time coming, but it also is that today Beyonce's album Cowboy Carter drops. And I am so here for it ever since Super Bowl announcement and those Texas Hold'em and 16 Carriages dropped. I was just like, country album Beyonce, yes, I'm here for it. And I am dissecting the entire tracklist. I'm here for all the collaborations. The, the cover of Jolene and the apparent cover of The Beatles' Blackbird. It's, it's just, I, this has been getting me through the weeks, my friend, and the day is finally here.
What I appreciate about this album, the last couple of albums, is obviously, I think with some of our favorite artists, we see the work that goes into it. We see the effort, but Beyonce is one of those people who, it is both show and tell. When you go to a concert, no matter how effortless she makes it look, you see the intention. You see how much work went into it. You don't even got to see the movie to know how hard it went. And then when you listen to like a Renaissance, when you listen and, and kind of look at the stories around Cowboy Carter, I said, you know what, I'm gonna do my own dissertation. I'm gonna do my own black musical explorations. I'm going to explore house music and the contributions of queer black people to building this genre. I'm gonna explore the black roots in country music and say, this is a Beyonce album, not a country album. And then we all know there's still another acticum. There's still another genre to explore.
I know. I don't know how you top it.
It's probably gonna be gospel. It's probably gonna be gospel. House, country, gospel with blues and jazz running through all of it.
I mean, when people say Queen B, it's like truly like Queen, she is like on another level at this point with, with, to your point, her artistry, her just cultural, this is a like cultural moment that I feel like everybody needs to stop and pay attention to. So good news to end the week and the end of month, honestly.
Heather, I'm gonna kick it over to you as we are over here listening to a little bit of Cowboy Carter. What is driving you through your week? What was your good news this week?
Well, I always count on my colleague Patty Wetley to bring me the cute animal news. And she did not disappoint this week. There is a new otter pup at the Shed Aquarium. He was rescued and he's got a new name, Seldovia. And he is named after the small fishing village where he was rescued. And I cannot emphasize enough, please go to wttw.com/news and look at these pictures of this little guy who is adorable. And how, if, if your heart is not moved, your heart is colder and deader than mine. And I do not believe that that is possible. If you're dealing with, you know, tough stories and tight elections, you gotta take some time to look at some otter pictures every once in a while, or you lose your mind.
Baby animals are never, never bad.
All the otters at the Shed are also rescued. Seldovia is about six months. And according to this piece, so cute, he's already started to bond with Luna and Watson. And it's starting introductions with Suri and Willow. I love that, that even the otters know, right? You gotta play it slow, man, you know, making friends at any age is tough. But you know, don't crowd people's space. Don't come with too much energy. Don't be too much on people. And it seems like Seldovia understands how to have good balance. And like you said, it's nothing like watching an otter do the bird, man. Just like rub its little hands together and just like look at you confused, ready to do a trick for a little piece of fish. My some good news is a shout out to my childhood friend, Chris Chaney. He's been He's been running his online bakery, Breadhead Bakery. You can find it on Instagram at Breadhead Bakery underscore. He's been running this for about the last year and they specialize in sourdough breads, blueberry lemon muffins. And earlier this week, he came by my house to bring me two blackened chicken and cheese with chihuahua cheese empanadas. Oh, he typically is at the 95th Street Farmers Market, which is out of season right now, but it's opening. And he wanted to bring me this empanada because he's about to break these out during Farmers Market season. And y'all, I'm telling you, is one of the best things I tasted. The, the blackened chicken and chihuahua cheese was stuffed through the empanada. There was no air inside the empanada. You know when you bite into an empanada and it's just like, all right, I just got the airy part of it? No. The, the crust was so flaky, so soft. And then he did like a, a lemon pepper seasoning on top, which kind of reminded me of like a pizza puff you might get on like 67th or something. And, and seeing how he has sort of taken his talents in the kitchen and, and expanded them over the last year with Breadhead Bakery has been so cool to see. And I'm just grateful he brought me those, those test empanadas because they were so good. They were so damn good. So I just wanted to show some love to my boy Chris. I appreciate you, man. And of course, I gotta give a lot of love to our guest today, WTTW City Hall reporter Heather Sharone. Thank you for making time for us.
Happy to do it. Anytime for you.
And Chalkbeat Chicago's Bureau Chief Becky Vivi, thank you for moving to 10 or 12 rooms in your house to make this work for us.
Thank you so much for having me and enjoy your Beyonce listening session.
For everybody listening, to read the articles we talked about, see the restaurants we recommended, go ahead and check your show notes. And stay tapped into all City Cast Chicago has to offer by bookmarking our website, chicago.citycast.fm. The City Cast ecosystem is deep. Not only do we got podcasts here in other cities, but we got a newsletter, a website. And if you really love the work we doing, consider becoming a member now by visiting membership.citycast.fm/Chicago. I gotta give a huge thank you to everybody else who makes this show possible. Our executive producer, Simone Ali-Saya, our producer, Michelle Navarro, our newsletter editor, Sidney Madden. Extra thanks to our roving producers this week, Elizabeth Kama and Lizzie Goldsmith. The music we all love is from Sam Thousand, Mark Greenberg from the Mayfair Workshop and all the kimonos. If you love City Cast Chicago nearly half as much as I love making it, consider rating and reviewing the podcast wherever you listen. We gonna be back here bright and early on Monday. Hopefully you'll join us. Peace.